I'd like to call the, oh my goodness, the July 24th City of Gardner Planning Commission to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to start with the roll call, starting on my right.
Speaker here.
Simmons Lee here.
Garden Hyer here.
Roberts here.
Brady here.
Bowden here.
Okay, a quorum is present. All matters listed within the consent agenda, oh, I'm sorry. We're going to add a third item to the agenda. And it's about the Gardner Lake, some, adding to some areas. And it's just going to be, initiate the text amended. It's not really voting on policy or anything like that. And we'll have a presentation on it when item number three comes. So I need a motion to allow us to put this on the agenda.
So moved.
Oh, lots of motions. So, and then I need a second?
Second.
Okay. So, motion by Garden Hyer and second by Simmons Lee.
I'm ready to agenda to add item number three.
Yes, thank you. Do I need to restate that?
No.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, so we're gonna, we had a motion and a second, and I don't know if we voted or not. Did we vote?
No.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, sorry. So now we'll move to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Are there any items the members of the commission would like to remove from the consent agenda? Are there any items any member of the public would like to have removed from the consent Okay, so we need a motion.
Move that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner McNair and seconded by Commissioner Bowden. All those, all those, oh my gosh, I don't know why I'm saying this, this is making me nervous. All those for the motion?
Aye.
I know, I didn't say that right. All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes six to zero. Okay, so we are ready now for our first regular agenda item, number one. And the presentation, I believe, will probably be on both items, but we'll need second, separate motions. Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Michelle Cricks, Planner at the City of Gardner. And this evening, I will be presenting items 1A and 1B for cottages at University Park, first plat, and the cottages at University Park, first phase. As Commissioner Roberts has stated, I will be doing both of these in one single presentation. However, there will be two staff recommendations and two separate Planning Commission recommended motions at the end of my presentation, and they will both be lined out for you guys. All right, so this is cottages at University Park, first plat. This project is located up at the northeast corner of the city, adjacent to Moonlight Road and University Drive. So on the screen in front of you, the entire parcel is outlined in blue. However, the area subject to our projects this evening is going to be highlighted with the red circle, so it's just going to be this first initial area. And then up in the upper left-hand corner is a city map with the area highlighted, just to kind of give reference of where the, where this project is located. Just kind of some quick background information with utilities. Again, I have on the graphic in front of you, the location is outlined in orange. And you can see with the availability of gas, electric, water, sanitary sewer, and storm water, that the site and the location has sufficient utilities adjacent to it for development. Surrounding parcels of the zoning, we have R3 directly to the east, planned business to the south across University Drive. And of course, that is where our new Justice Center is currently under construction. Planned mixed density residential to the north. And then, of course, we have the rural up at the, up there in the green, adjacent to Moonlight, that is outside of the city boundary, so that our U.R. zoning designation is actually a county zoning designation. And just a kind of a quick here to take a look at the comprehensive land use map from the 2014 comprehensive plan that identifies this property as low-density residential, described in the comprehensive plan as primarily consisting of detached, detached, single-family, duplex, and triplex housing in a low-density format on larger lots, with buildings in character with typical, single-family homes. In the preliminary development plan approved earlier this year, both single-family and two-family building types were proposed, with the addition of a fourplex pinwheel-style building type in this development. Now, the fourplex buildings, of course, are not consistent with low-density residential, but the overall site, the overall density would averages at about 4.75 dwelling units per acre. And that's a little over 9,100 square feet per lot, which is more consistent with the low-density patterns. And the comprehensive plan also has identified this area for new growth, new residential growth. And under the Housing section of the plan, which is undeveloped land that provides a clean slate for future residential development to contribute to and enforce the city's existing character identity. A goal of the new residential growth is to ensure a new development meets the requirements of the Land Development Code and provide flexibility to accommodate a variety of housing types and intensities. And this proposed development does comply with that aspect of the comprehensive plan, helping to create a very diverse, more diverse housing stock here in Gardner. And this photograph, to some of you, might look a little familiar. This was taken back in January or February, kind of showing the area of the site from the, about the, gosh, southeast corner. And this is what it looks like now, so I couldn't get a good photograph, which is why I went back to the one in January, because it's, the corn is taller than I am. And then here's another view. This is from the end of Blair Street, and looking to then, to back down to the southeast. And again, this is what it looks like today. Lush, green, and lots of corn. So many of you were not on the commission when this whole project came through as a preliminary, preliminary planned, preliminary plat, and a rezoning case back in February. So I thought I'd give a quick background, just to kind of bring everybody up to date. Of course, the staff report has it more detailed of what that history is, but it's good to still have and talk about it. So in February 2018, the Planning Commission was presented with several applications for the cottages at University Park subdivision proposed at University Drive in Gretna. Those applications, considered by the Planning Commission, are reviewed, including a rezoning from an RP2, which is a planned two-family residential, to RP3 and RP4. The RP3 is a planned garden apartment, and the RP4 is planned mixed-density residential neighborhood. And also, because of the planned district, had an attached preliminary development plan and a preliminary plat for this development. That plan included a mix of single-family building types on, and, excuse me, a mix of residential building types on 91 lots overall, and 160 dwelling units on 33.639 acres. And those mix of residential units were a single-family residential, two-family residential, and four-family residential. And also included was common open space, walking trails, central community amenity with pool, fire pit, and a versatile playfield. The zoning pattern places lower-density housing adjacent to existing, single-family to the north, and transitions to a higher-density pattern as you move southeast across the site. So this graphic in front of you now might look very familiar. I included it in your staff report packet that went with you. But this is a copy of the approved zoning layout. And the RP3, which is the area colored maroon here, the applicant had proposed a combination of duplexes. And in this particular area, the applicant will refer to those as more of a skinny duplex and a fourplex pinwheel quad. Then on the RP4, which is the area noted in brown, that area, both single-family houses and duplexes are proposed. And then this area outlined in red here is the subject of tonight's final plat and final development plan. And then here's a copy of that preliminary development plan that was approved by the Planning Commission, and also approved by the governing body, since it was attached to the zoning back in, the Planning Commission approved it in February, the governing body approved it in March. So you can kind of see what the overall site layout would, is conceptualized to look like upon its completion. Okay, now because this application was proposed as a planned district, the applicant also had requested six deviations for the project. And I did outline these more intently in the staff report, but just to kind of highlight those, they, they had requested a reduced front yard setbacks for the duplex building type in the RP4 district, reduced building setbacks for the skinny duplexes in the RP3, reduced setbacks for the fourplexes in the RP3, reduced lot sizes on four of those lots in the RP4. They also requested deviation to the building design for the duplex building type. The Land Development Code sets standards for garage limits for duplex building types, and the deviation allowed the applicant to exceed those garage limits on some of those lots. And then the final deviation was the applicant requested a setback to the pool parking down to 20 feet. The preliminary development plan also outlined the concept of what is called a limited common element, or an LCE. And that was reduced as a new and unique characteristic for the development, and had not yet been employed yet in the City of Gardner. So you see the graphic in front of you, where some of those areas, you can see where they're, I have highlighted, kind of, were showing, and you can see some elements outside of some lot lines. And then LCE allows a portion of an attached building element, like a deck, patio, driveway, walkway, to be owned, maintained, and for the exclusive use by the homeowner. All those elements will be outside the property lines. They would be out on common property, but it will be owned and maintained by that property owner. And what that LCE does is actually allows the developer to maximize open space and create it for more of the common, for the community. So, and also, just kind of for reference, later in the presentation, I'll be, the LCE, the applicant has actually changed it to be called a limited common area, so that will be referred later as an LCA, or limited common area. And overall, so staff was supportive of the applicant's rezoning request, the preliminary development plan, and preliminary plat. The Planning Commission agreed with staff and forwarded a recommendation of approval to the governing body for the rezoning of preliminary development plan. The preliminary plat, which does not require approval by the governing body, was approved by the Planning Commission. And because this property is in with one mile of New Century Air Center, it also required approval from the county. And the applicants, the applications presented tonight are the first phase of this development. So the final plat, go into each of this real quick here. The final plat is for the first phase of development. So that'll be 7.63129 acres on a combination, for, on a combination of duplexes and single-story fourplexes and some of the common space. A total of 16 lots are included on the final development plat request, and the applicant has not requested any deviations from the preliminary plat on this application. And it's, I'm sorry, this is very difficult to read, but this is, you have a copy of the plat in with your plans, but this is just a snapshot of that plat where you can see the 16 lots. The Blair right-of-way cul-de-sac will be dedicated to the city for right-of-way, and you can see where some of those lots are along Gretna Street and Blair. Now, that Land Development Code will require excise tax to be paid with the final plat. An excise tax is levied with the act of plating the portion of the property within the city. The subject property has never been part of the final plat, and therefore, is subject to paying excise tax. The current rate is 20 cents per square foot of land area platted, and since this includes about 332,418.99 square feet as eligible for excise tax collection, and therefore, the excise tax is calculated to be 66,483.80, and will be paid prior to the mayor signing an approved recordable plat, which is text taking from the Land Development Code. The final development plan, so I've broken this up into two, two discussions. We'll talk about what's involved with the RP3, excuse me, RP4, and then we'll talk about what the RP3. So, the six lots here highlighted on the graphic at the bottom right-hand is more of a traditional duplex style that is within the RP3 zoning district. And in this area, they are proposing 12 dwelling units on six lots along Gretna, and one of the lots will be then facing Blair. The duplexes in this phase will have side-entry garages and shared drives, and a single garage door will be facing the front. The building materials proposed on these units are to be high-end and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Now, for the, more of the compact style housing units along Blair, these are to be single-story, compact, fourplexes, duplexes, those skinny duplexes, as I referred to earlier. And this portion is in the RP3 zoning district. There'll be 10 lots and a total of 32 dwelling units. Access to these units will be by shared drives from Blair Street, and those shared drives will be, have dedicated access easements for each of those units. Building materials, again, will also be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and this, it'll, these, these units will have the limited common areas will be assessed on these. And the limited common elements are to be defined in the Homeowners' Association Declaration and Restrictions. The applicant on the final development plan also requested no deviations, other than those that were approved by the Planning Commission in February on this, on this project. Staff finds that this is consistent with both the preliminary plat, or, excuse me, preliminary development plan and preliminary plat that was originally approved by the city. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan and provides a mix of housing which conserves multiple age groups in the City of Gardner. So for the final plat, staff's recommendation is, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve FP-18-04, a final plat for the cottages at University Park, first parcel, located at the northeast corner of University Drive and Gretna Street, based on a review of a staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final plat dated July 12, 2018, with conditions, and recommends the governing body, recommends to the governing body to accept any right-of-way and easements. For the final development plan, staff is recommending the Planning Commission approve case FDP-1804, a final development plan for cottages at University Park, first phase, located at the northeast corner of University Drive and Gretna, a staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final development plan dated July 12, 2018. And then here is the recommended motion for the plat. And then the conditions would be prior to the mayor sign, the approved recordable plat, excise tax shall be paid, and then construction plans for utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all technical specifications. And then here's the recommended motion for the final development plan. I'll click back to the plat, for your review. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we can, if the applicant is here and has any presentation that they would like to give us, that would be appreciated. And just, you need to state your name and address for the record.
Todd Allen Brand, Payton, Brockaway, 426 South Kansas Avenue, Olathe, Kansas. Well, it feels like I was just like here a couple days ago, but I'd just like to thank you guys for, again, for the opportunity to come forward and present our case. And we've read through the report, and we're in agreement with the report, but we're here to answer any questions, so that's probably about it, pretty simple.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there, this is not a public hearing, but if there's anybody from the public that would like to get up and speak or have questions or concerns? No public. So, okay, we can then open the discussion for, with the Commissioners. Commissioner McNair, do you, we'll start with you. Do you have any?
I don't have any at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Simmons Lee?
No, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Garden Hyer?
Two things. The first is more just a curiosity question. I see, these are single, these are single-story buildings, right?
The duplexes that are along Gretna, the duplexes along Gretna Street are going to be probably two stories. The ones that are in the RP4, on those smaller, more compact lots, are most likely going to be single-family. Those particular units are geared for more of a empty nester, senior housing, so the developer, and correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, are going to gear those more towards senior and empty nesters. So they're going to remain as more of a single-story, maybe have a few that are one and a half.
Okay. I just, I saw stairways in the garage, and I didn't know where they led. I was just confused. I don't think this is really absolutely necessary, I was just confused.
Well, the stairway in the garage, they have a, like a safe room downstairs for, like, tornadoes and stuff, so it's only basically the width of the garage and like, maybe a third of the depth of the garage, and that's just so they can have a place for shelter if there's a tornado, or they can use it for storage, but there'll be nothing down there, it'll just be unfinished, essentially, storage area.
Okay. I was just curious. All right. So the real question I have is the recommended motion, should and the governing body accept dedication of right-of-way and easement? Should that be number three? Or, it looks weird how it's written. I don't know if that's, that was just one I saw.
No, you're recommending, you're recommending the governing body, because when the final plat, when the final plat goes, your recommendation is that along with these conditions, that they, that you approve the conditions, the case with the conditions, and you're recommending the government, to the governing body that they accept the right-of-way and easements.
Okay, that makes sense. That's all the questions.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. I didn't have any either. So with no further discussion or questions for the applicant or staff, I would entertain a motion.
I motion after review of application, FP-18-04, a final plat for cottages at University Park, first plat, parcel ID CP94500000T0C, located at the northeast corner of University Drive and Gretna Street, based on review of a staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final plat dated July 12, 2018. The Planning Commission approves the application with the following conditions. Number one, prior to the mayor signing an approved recordable plat, excise tax shall be paid to the city. Number two, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all technical specifications, and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the release of the plat for recording. And recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Bowden and a second by Garden Hyer. Is there any discussion of the motion? Okay, so a motion was made by Commissioner Bowden, seconded by Garden Hyer, and as the recommended motion is, after review of the application, FP-18-04, a final plat for cottages at University Park, first plat, parcel ID CP94500000T0C, located at the northeast corner of University Drive and Gretna Street, based on the review of a staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final plat dated July 12, 2018, the Planning Commission approves the application with the following conditions. One, prior to the mayor signing an approved recordable plat, excise tax shall be paid to the city. Number two, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all technical specifications, and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the release of the plat for recording. And recommends the governing body accept the dedication, right-of-way, and easements. Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we are ready for the second motion. I know, we had discussion on both of them, was there any other questions or anything before we get the motion? Okay. So I'd entertain a motion.
After review of the application, FDP-1804, a final development plan for cottages at University Park, first phase, parcel ID CP94500000T0C, located in the northeast corner of University Drive and Gretna Street, a staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final development plan dated July 12, 2018. The Planning Commission approves the application, subject to the following condition. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the final plat for cottages at University Park, first plat, shall be recorded with Johnson County.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussions of the motion? Okay. Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and seconded by Commissioner Garden Hyer. After review of the application, FDP-18-04, a final development plan for cottages at University Park, first phase, parcel ID CP94500000T0C, located at the northeast corner of University Drive and Gretna Street, a staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final development plan dated July 12, 2018. The Planning Commission approves the application, subject, subject to the following condition. Number one, prior to the ensuing of a building permit, the, the final plat for cottages at University Park, first plat, shall be recorded with Johnson County. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I think we're ready for item number two.
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Cricks, Planner at the City of Gardner. I'm here to present this evening the second plat and second phase for Gardner Business Center, located at the northeast corner of Moonlight Road and East Warren Street. Here is the general location. You may remember this project that came before you back in May for the preliminary zoning, preliminary development plan, preliminary plat, final development plan, and final plat for the first phase. So this evening is second phase, and it's highlighted in yellow in front of you for this particular project. Just kind of a quick outline of the utilities. Our subject property or subject area is highlighted in yellow, and you can see that gas, electric, sewer, water, and stormwater are readily available around the site, which, so it has all the necessary utilities for development. Here is a photograph of the site from Moonlight Road. You can see it's, you know, vacant properties that, I think, yeah, one time it had some crops on here. So this is a copy of the site that's from the land use map, from the Main Street corridor plan. As you're probably aware, that- As you're probably aware, that the city recently adopted the Main Street corridor plan and incorporated that plan into the 2014 City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan by reference. That plan did build upon previous studies to bring a cohesive vision, to enhance the quality of life, and provide a sense of place among other, to the Main Street corridor. This parcel is included in the study area, and you can see that big, thick, black line on the graphic in front of you. That is the very southern boundary of the corridor study area. And this parcel was identified as community mixed-use on that plan, on that land use map. And then this, this area of the land use map supersedes the future land use map and the comprehensive plan on those parcels within the study area. A 2018 amendment to the comprehensive plan describes the community mixed-use future land use area as intended to provide retail and professional services for those everyday needs of the people residing or working in the community. Uses should be limited to those that meet the needs of residents for civic uses, grocery, retail, restaurants, hotels, professional services, and the like, and includes my, office and medical or commercial uses. And so, the proposed office use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then the review, also views of the preliminary development plan. The Planning Commission did approve the commercial storage outdoor use as an additional use, as a limited, for the accessory. So just to kind of backtrack, the site, and I apologize, I have graphics in here with it, is, was originally approved for two different types, two different types of primary uses. One was office warehouse flex space on the west side of the property. On the east side of the property was going to be personal storage. There was going to be some accessory outdoor commercial storage as well, and outdoor accessory, private, personal storage. So what's in front of you tonight is for one of the office flex spaces. So the final plat request is for a single lot, that's 82,793.4 square feet for a single-story building and the associated parking. On that plat also provides a cross-access parking easement on the lot for the shared drives and parking. And this easement is to be provided on all the plats for this development. Just because it's a final plat, the Land Development Code does have provisions where excise tax is required at 20 cents per square foot. Since this plat is 82,793.4 square feet, excise tax is calculated to be about 16,558.68 and of course will be required to be paid to the city prior to the mayor signing an approved recordable plat as it's outlined in the Land Development Code. The applicant is requesting approval for the second phase of development for the Gardner Business Center. At the May Planning Commission meeting, the first phase was approved along with rezoning application, preliminary development plan, preliminary plat. According to the developer, due to the increased interest in his development, he is going ahead and moving forward with the second phase, which is, of course, is what we're talking about this evening. And this phase is for a single-story, 19,500-square-foot office warehouse flex space building. Will have multiple office spaces. There will be no direct access from Moonlight or Warren Street to this lot. Access will be from Warren Street through the first lit phase, or first lot, which is a little further to the east. And will be able to be accessed with the cross-access and parking easement that I previously brought up. The proposed use of the site is for a 19,500-square-foot multi-tenant, single-story office warehouse flex space building on 1.9 acres. The main building entrances will face Moonlight with parking and landscaping along both streets. The applicant has included enhanced landscaping to screen the parking from the street and manufactured housing development to the south. Along Warren Street, a 10-foot bike hike path with seating is proposed, which was one of the goals and the policies of the recently approved Main Street Corridor Plan. There are two eight-foot sidewalks from the building, from both, one from Moonlight, one from Warren Street, that connect the building to the public realm. And the applicant has provided a bicycle parking along the path building, so in the, there is easy access to the bike hike path. No additional deviations were requested on the final development plan beyond what was approved at the Planning Commission in May. The building is for the, proposed to be a large commercial building type. Shall be a single-story, multi-tenant office warehouse flex space, which is, you know, 19,000 square feet. The building materials proposed are a combination natural colored stone, glass, and pre-finished non-corrogated metal and taupe. Surrounding buildings in the neighborhood are mostly single-story structures as well. And so the height of the building with a flat roof design doesn't exceed 26 feet. It's in scale with the surrounding neighborhood. And although this is a single-story building, the additional height includes rooftop utility screens for mechanical equipment and also provides some vertical articulation with respect to the public realm. Here's a kind of a shot of the landscape plan that was provided in your, in your packet. You can see the enhanced landscape that the applicant is providing along Warren Street and along Moonlight. There's enhanced landscaping along the facade of the building. And the applicant has also provided some evergreen trees along the north of his building, just to add some, a little additional landscaping along there too, and provide a buffer. Okay, so during the preliminary development plan and the final development plan for Phase 1, Public Works expressed concern regarding the stacking of cars and vehicles, or excuse me, vehicles, traveling from Warren Street onto Moonlight. And you can see in the graphic in front of you, that is currently a two-lane road. And so, the Planning Commission approved a condition that, when the next phase came in, that the applicant was to provide an additional lane and therefore dedicate a right-turn-only lane and a left-turn-only lane onto Moonlight to help with that car stacking. And so, this, this is showing you here that the applicant is complying with that condition of approval. And you can see where they are cutting in a little bit with the road and will be creating a right-turn-only dedicated lane and a left-turn-only dedicated lane, satisfying the condition and concerns that Public Works had. Staff finds that this plan is consistent with both the preliminary development plan and the preliminary plat, and is consistent with the City of Gardner, Main Street Corridor Plan. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve FP-1805, a final plat for Gardner Business Center, second plat, located at the northeast corner of South Moonlight Road and East Warren Street, based on review of a staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final plat dated July 12, 2018, with conditions, and recommends to, and recommend to the governing body to accept any right-of-way easements. And the staff recommendation for the final development plan, staff is recommend, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve case FDP-1805, a final development plan for Gardner Business Center, Phase 2, located in the northeast corner of South Moonlight Road and East Warren Street. A staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final development plan dated July 12, with one condition. And then I will bring up the recommended motions for the final plat. The conditions that staff recommends would be prior to the mayor signing an approved recordable plat, excise tax be paid, and then of course, the construction plans for utilities, infrastructure, or any public facilities shall meet all technical specifications. And then the final development plan condition would include, is recommended to say, to include, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the final plat for the Gardner Business Center, second plat, shall be recorded with Johnson County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here and want to make any statements?
Todd Allen Brand, Payton, Rockaway, Olathe, Kansas, 426 South Kansas Avenue. So we've read the report and we're in agreement with the report, and here to answer any questions if you have any.
While you're up here, does the Commissioner, the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Mine's more a timeline question. I see that the Airport Commission and the Johnson County Board of Commissioners have to approve this as well. So what's that timeline before our city council can see it?
Is it three weeks out?
Yeah, the city council will have the plat at the third Monday, at the second governing body meeting next month.
So they can see this before it's approved by those other two entities?
That's correct. Actually, the County Airport Board or the Board of County Commissioners will not review it until the city has rendered all decisions.
Very good. So assuming this gets passed here, governing body approves, then what's the timeline on the back end of those other two groups?
The, this will go to the August Airport Board Meeting. At the, they hold one meeting a month, and it's usually the last Wednesday of the month. So it's already scheduled for that Airport Board Meeting, and then it will go to the Board of County Commissioners in September. Once the, once the Board of County Commissioners renders their final decision, then they can move forward with building permits.
Todd, you would start moving dirt when?
Well, we're working on the first, construction plans for the first phase right now. And I think we're probably looking the first phase September. We're, we're working on a land disturbance plan right now to get it submitted to KDHED for approval, because he needs to bring in some dirt for Phil, so we can start doing the mass grading. And, but I would say the building, the first phase will definitely probably start in September, we're hoping. And then, you know, a couple of months after that, we'll probably start working on the second one. But he's got some, I guess, I think, I can't remember totally, but I believe that his first building might be, might have it all asked for. And his second building, it might be close to half, maybe three-fourths asked, so he's just...
Build it and they will come.
Yeah, I guess, I guess. He's pretty excited about it.
Any other questions for Mr. Allenbrand? Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Well, I guess we're ready for a motion if nobody else has any questions.
After review of the application, FP-1805, a final plat for Gardner Business Center, second plat, parcel ID CF2314301011, located in the northeast corner of South Moonlight Road and Warren, East Warren Street. A staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final plat dated July 12, 2018. The Planning Commission approves the application with the following conditions. Number one, prior to the mayor signing an approved recordable plat, excise tax shall be paid to the city. And number two, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all technical specifications, and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the release of the plat for recording. And recommends the governing body accept dedication of the right-of-way and easements.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Brady and a second by Commissioner Bowden on FP-1805. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. After, so the motion is, after review of the application, FP-1805, a final plat for Gardner Business Center, second plat, parcel ID CF231430-1011, located at the northeast corner of South Moonlight Road and East Warren Street. A staff reported, staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final plat dated July 12, 2018, the Planning Commission approves the application with the following conditions. Number one, prior to the mayor signing an approved recordable plat, excise tax shall be paid to the city. Number two, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all technical specifications, and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the release of the plat for recording. And recommends the governing body accept dedication of the right-of-way and easements. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Okay, we are on to the second part of regular agenda item number two. Was there any discussion on this item, or any questions, or? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
After review of application, FDP-18-05, a final development plan for Gardner Business Center, Phase 2, parcel ID CF231430-1011, located at the northeast corner of South Moonlight Road and East Warren Street. A staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final development plan dated July 12, 2018. The Planning Commission approves the application, subject to the following condition. One, prior to this, to this issuance of a building permit, the final plat for Gardner Business Center, second plat, shall be recorded with Johnson County.
Second.
So we have a motion for FDP-1805 by Commissioner Gardenhire and a second by Commissioner Bowden. And the motion is, after review of application, FDP-1805, a final development plan for Gardner Business Center, Phase 2, parcel ID CF231430-1011, located at the northeast corner of South Moonlight Road and East Warren Street. A staff report dated July 24, 2018, and a final development plan dated July 12, 2018. The Planning Commission approves the application, subject to the following condition. Number one, prior to the insuance of a building permit, the final plat for Gardner Business Center, second plat, shall be recorded with Johnson County. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I think we are ready for regular item number three.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kelly Drake-Webber, Chief Planner. I know when you came here tonight, you didn't know this was going to be the Cricks-Allen Brand show. And you didn't know I was going to spring a new agenda item on you either. I promise you, it's still going to be a short meeting.
This could have been the shortest meeting ever.
I know, right. But I do thank you for being willing to consider adding this agenda item. Sometimes things come up, and I'd like to be able to address all the text amendments together at the next meeting. Something for you to look forward to. So this is, this would work out great. So what we are asking you to do is consider initiating a potential text amendment and zoning map amendment to address development issues for properties near Gardner Lake. This is not figuring it all out tonight. This is just initiate it so staff can think it through, put some stuff together, and bring back to you at the next meeting. The reason we are doing this is because we've had some recent development requests that have made us aware of some issues or problems with future development at the Gardner Lake. These lots around the Gardner Lake are R1 Single Family Zoning District, which is consistent with the low-density residential future land use designation in the comprehensive plan. However, that R1 zoning district has two detached house building types that go with it. One's the estate, which is for larger lots, and then the detached house suburban building type, which is, has a minimum lot size of 70 feet. A lot of these lots that are around Gardner Lake appear to have been developed at 50-foot-wide lot splits. So what happens is, and you may or may not be aware of that, the property directly adjacent to the lake mostly was owned by the city all the way around. And then the property owners own land adjacent to that. Some of these property owners have been able to buy that land from the city that's between their property and the lake. So Michelle, if you can kind of point out that those areas, they're behind those lots, right on the lake, right? So they purchased those lots, and then in the future, they may decide they want to come back and they want to combine those parcels, and they want to add on or do something to them. Well, we cannot approve somebody combining a lot that is not consistent with zoning regulations. So any new lot that's created would have... So any new lot that's created would have to meet the minimum lot size, and these are only 50 foot wide. They're not going to meet that 70 foot wide standard that the smallest building type we have currently in that district would allow. So we started thinking, you know, what are the options for, for these people? And we do have a building type, detached house neighborhood building type, which has a 50-foot minimum lot width and a smaller lot size, and kind of fits this context a lot better. It's not enabled in the zoning district that they're in. They would have to be zoned R2 in order to use that building type. R2 allows some different uses that are not really consistent with the character of the lake and, and possibly don't really fit. So we started thinking, okay, what else could we do? And it was our thought that we might be able to create an overlay district for Gardner Lake that would enable that other building type to be used. It would also maybe be able to address things that are not currently addressed, that are really different for these lots, like which side is the front, which side is the back? Some people think, you know, the lake is the front, and, you know, so there's confusion. There's, usually, lakefront properties have different implications for accessory structures, for storing vehicles, for where do you put your fences, you know? So there, there are several things that we could try to work out that would be in the overlay district. So an overlay district would lay on top of the R1 zoning district regulations. It would just be something, additional standards they would have to meet, or different standards they'd have to meet over and above the R1 district standard. So that's kind of the direction that we thought we would head, or at least we want to look into it with our city attorney's assistance, bringing back something quality for you to think about, and that would also allow these people the same kind of development opportunity that they'd have in the rest of the city. Currently, only the lots that are, you know, highlighted in blue here are in the city. That doesn't mean that in the future, other properties might not decide to annex into the city or, or something. So we, we want to think of the area as a whole, just in case that happens. So we are recommending that since the current form-based zoning regulations do not reflect the existing development context, and that this zoning district does reflect appropriate use restrictions, but we have a mismatch with development restrictions. So we would like to explore the possibility of creating this district that I've described. And so we recommend that you initiate potential text amendment and zoning map amendment to address development issues for properties near Gardner Lake. You have a recommended motion at the bottom of the sheet that I put out on your seat there tonight, and I'm open for any questions, although I don't have it all figured out yet, so.
Anybody have any questions?
No. Yeah, just a couple of things, and then, and you may not have the answers, but just some things to think for our, for next meeting. Number of lots that this is going to affect, what's, how, what's the magnitude of this? Are we talking a dozen, or are we talking 150? I mean, I have no idea what the scope of this is, if this is.
Well, right now, it, it would probably only affect five lots.
Okay.
Because those are the only ones that are in the city and under 70 foot.
And then, what is, opportunities are there for, how do we notify Gardner Lake residents? He's five...
Yeah, since...
How are they notified and have the opportunities to speak?
If we create this overlay district with a specific designated area, which is what I think we need to do, we would notify them in newspaper and by letter.
And we'd have like a public...
We have a public hearing.
And then, and I'm the smartest guy in the world, so when you talk about creating an overlay district, at your next presentation, you defined it today, but, just try me again next time?
Sure.
Dude, it sounds like, this is not, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't get it. So...
Okay.
I want to make sure I, this is, this is a big decision, even though it's only five establishments, we're, we're making a decision that's going to affect dec, you know, decades down the road. I want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Right, and it'll help when you see what kind of standards are involved, and if you just remember that they have to meet the same standards mostly that anything else in R1 would have to meet, it's just whatever we come up with, the new thing. And the reason we're doing it really is to offer them more opportunity, because as it is, say, the person that already owns one of these lots, that has a house built on it, they get that additional lot. If they're not able to combine them into one lot, they're not going to be able to add on to their house, they're not going to be able to do anything except let it exist like it is right now. So we're trying to create more opportunity, not more restrictions.
Sometimes you share pictures, actual property. I mean, this, you know, bird's eye view is fine, but I...
You'd like to see images of the, what's on there and, and everything, like ground level?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions as well.
Okay.
It looks like from the, you know, I'm, this first officer seen this, so bear with me. It looks like this is not real conducive to use individually, the big areas. Are we trying, are some of the lot owners trying to combine lots and, and make things that are, that are usable for residential space? Is that the general idea here?
Well, there's only one lot here, shown here. I think one of the small lots that's not developed yet, it's the, the little triangle one and the one right next to it. Those are not developed yet. Potentially, that person could want to combine those properties and build something.
What about setbacks and, you know, side setbacks, front setbacks? Have you thought about the, you know, those kinds of issues?
That would be something that we will probably evaluate when we look at creating this overlay district. We'll look at what's out there and kind of how they're situated and, and see what we need to do there. I'm hoping not to have to revise them, but I do know one thing that we talked about today is that, that some of the building types have range of front setback, like 10 to 35 feet or whatever. We may need to allow greater setback, because people put them back as close to the lake as they can get and as far away from the road as they can get, so we may have to do something there.
What about easements and stuff like that for access?
I don't anticipate changing any of our standards relating to access unless something comes up that I'm not aware of.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
So you were stating that the overlay district that you want to put in, there's a standard that allows for 50-foot wide lots?
Mm-hmm.
So every lot that we're talking about in this instance is 50 foot or greater at this moment?
Well, no, there are some out there that look like they were 45 to me. They, you know, I don't know what we can do for those necessarily and still be in context with this area. They would be legal, non-conforming lots, and they would be able to do some things on them, and they might be able to do an addition if it meets setbacks and stuff like that. So they're not precluded from doing anything, but you can't create a new lot that doesn't meet our standard.
Okay. What, what is the name of the road here? Is this Lake Road?
Uh, it's like West Gardner...
Or something.
Road or what?
I thought about driving out there myself, just to...
The Big Road? It's the one that goes right past the golf course. It's Gardner Road, right?
If you back out, it shows the road name, I think.
It does for a second.
It does for a brief moment.
I know, I hate when it does that. There you go.
Yeah, the Gardner Lake Road Three is what leads into it. Okay.
Golf course is right there?
Yeah.
I don't know why. It's psychotic, I don't know.
So the reason I bring that up is because I, I feel like if we're going to address this issue, we should address it, at least try and get it to where we can address it for everyone who's in that, that area. So if it's, if someone's at 43 feet, then we need to maybe at least look at that. If you want to, I mean, if there's not an easy way to do that, or there's a, there's a, if we do that, that would destroy everything we've ever built, you know, with whatever district we're trying, you get what I'm saying? I don't want to cause more problems than solve, but at the same time, if we can encapsulate everyone...
I, I think none of the parcels that are actually in the city are smaller than 50 foot, so we would be accommodating, you know, dealing with everyone that's in the city limits currently. But there are some on the other side of the lake, I think, that were smaller.
Okay.
But I'll think about that and see if, you know, if that's something that happened in the future, what could we do?
Right, okay. That's, that's what I was kind of getting at. And then that's what I was going to lead into, if there's others, so we can sort of future-proof this, but not spend too much time on it, because if you try and future-proof everything, you'll just spend all your time trying to future-proof everything.
Yeah, that's very true.
Yeah, so, just something to think about.
And any more feedback?
How did this come to your attention? How, how is this going to work?
Um, we, we had an actual applicant that wanted to combine their lots, and we had to say, oops, yeah, can't do it. All right, they're very devastated, so.
Yeah. I'm going to jump in here. We've actually had that one, and we had another one, just further, if you look at where the, the property or the city boundary is, between the two pieces, there's two kind of slivers, those two. One of those was actually in the city, and there, the other one was in just the county, and owned by the same people, and we worked with them. They had two different, different houses on them. They wanted to, they demolished one, wanted to demolish another, replat the lots to make them better shaped, and then build houses on them. Under the city code, we didn't have a district for them, because they had to be, Michelle, if you'll point to where their front lot line is, which is right there. They don't want to be 10 to 20 to 50 feet from there. They want to be back towards the lake. And so our recommendation to them to be able to do what they wanted to do was to de-annex that piece of property. Now granted, it, it wasn't developed, it didn't, you know, gain the city a lot of tax base, but we hate to tell people that, you know, you should really de-annex from the city to be able to accommodate you. We really want to be able to, you know, tell people this is how you can get to what you want, and be able to develop your property and use the lake as an asset. And the lake is really almost a different animal, because you're thinking almost backwards most of the time, where people are wanting to be closer to the back of their property versus to the front of their property, and all the different things that it pulls into there. I actually talked to the applicant today who, we had to turn down their, their application for a plat. He wants to build, he bought the property behind him from the city, it's the middle one, Michelle?
Yeah.
Yeah, bought the property behind him from the city, plans to put an addition on there. The property is actually in the city now, it doesn't show up on here. Annexed that piece of property, wanted to combine and be able to put an addition on, and we don't have a zoning, or a building type that would allow for him to do that without rezoning, and we probably wouldn't support the rezoning, and, you know, it all kind of snowballs, and you're just kind of like, well, this area is different.
Yeah.
So that's what we want to try to do, is think about this area kind of outside from your standard suburban, or even kind of near downtown small lot developments, because it's got different aspects to it. People want to put their garage by the street and their house in the back, so being able to deal with some of that, and we want to be able to look at that and, and really try to tailor that towards the lake.
So this piece of pie that comes off those four properties, is that?
That's city.
Who owns?
That's, that's city right of way.
That's what?
City right of way.
So I know, I just stated this, but I want to kind of reiterate this. I'm a fan of more annexation, as, you know, we were just talking about. So that's why I brought up the future-proofing this. If there's a lot out there that's smaller than that, because it should be, it should be easier to go through a city than a county, I think. That's just my personal opinion. So if, if we're telling these, these people, rightly so, that the best way to accomplish their goals is to go to the county, that's, that's the opposite of what we should be doing. So I think that if there's a way we can accommodate the rest of the lake, ideally speaking, where everyone on the lake, if they wanted to be annexed, would want to be annexed so they could do something as simple as, hey, I just bought the lot behind me, I want to combine it, so.
Yeah, and I don't know if we can do an administrative adjustment for minimum lot size, but I'll look at that, too. Any other great ideas? I need them. Okay.
Um, we don't really have an applicant already in our presentation, so I guess if nobody else has any questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I motion to initiate a text amendment to Section 17 dot 06, Special Districts of the Gardner Land Development Code and zoning map amendment to address issues pertaining to future residential development in the vicinity of Gardner Lake.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. The motion was made by Commissioner Bowden, and the second was by Commissioner McNair. Any discussion, any questions? Okay, so the motion is, the motion to initiate a text amendment to Section 17 dot 06, Special Districts of Gardner Land Development Code and zoning map amendments to address issues pertaining to future residential development in the vicinity of Gardner Lake. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
There's no discussion agenda items on the, for tonight, so I guess I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion, Commissioner Brady, second by, oh gosh, everybody's seconding Commissioner Bowden, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
Yay.
Just remember, the next meeting's going to be longer, so make sure you...